Good evening and welcome to the Cabarrus County Board of Education's called meeting for Monday, January the 24th, 2022. We'll say welcome to the viewing audience that is joining us live stream and for all those that are here with us, and I would ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just for the viewing audience and those that may not have read the advertisement for this meeting, this meeting is called to satisfy the expiration of the motion that was made by Mrs. Carpenter and seconded by Mrs. Sandage for the mask mandate of January 10th. I will ask that we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. So I have a motion by Ms. Blackwell, a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye. Thank you. And with that, we will turn it over to 4.1, to Dr. Kapiki for the Cabarrus County Schools' COVID-19 data and information update.
Mr. Basileis? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I appreciate the time that we have to talk about the COVID update, as well as several other important points, including the Metrics Committee's Task Force meeting and so an update on tests to stay. So this first slide that we're looking at here just gives us our current metrics. As you can see, we have two in the red zone and two in the green zone. The two in the red zone are our community metrics of positivity rate and number of cases within the last 14 days. And the other two are school-based metrics, which deal with the number of COVID-positive students and total quarantines for the week. This just gives you an idea of where these numbers come in to populate the matrix that you just saw. Thirty-five point seven being the positivity rate, 6,891 being the number of cases in Cabarrus County in the last 14 days. This graph here shows you what our local data looks like in terms of student quarantines and positives, with positives being the blue line, quarantines being the green line. And here's that same information tabled out for you with this pink highlighted area, I guess you'd say, being when we went to mask optional. The white area is when we were mask mandated. Pink is mask optional. This sort of brownish-yellow that I put here is kind of when we're in both, right? Last, that week, we went to mask mandated on a Wednesday, so you really couldn't categorize it as one another because it was a bit of both. And then you can see most recently, our most current data is back in our mask mandated, you know, unfilled or white zone. So that's the data that we have for the most current week. I do want to talk to you all about the task force. You all have been talking for some time about the task force revisiting some of the metrics that we have. Since the time that we've last met, the task force has met, the Metrics Committee within that group has also met, and then the larger task force has reconvened. So I'm just going to go over some of their recommendations with you all tonight. So when we were revisiting the metrics, the big things that we needed to figure out were, were the scale of the school-based standards correct? There was some question about that. Does an even number confound your decision-making? So this week, for example, we have two in the red and two in the green, right? I mean, two to two is, doesn't really give you a majority on either side. And then, should there be additional metrics? Okay? So here's a quick history of where we've been, the task force has been. The task force launched in December of 2020. The initial metrics were used to return to in-person learning. In late August of 2021, North Carolina made, you know, decisions about masking to be determined by you all, by local boards. And then the metrics in the fall of 2021 focused on when to change from mask mandated and mask optional and vice versa. Okay? So the difference when we first started, we were talking about returning to in-person learning, and then last fall, the conversation became about when do we need to be in masks or under a mask optional situation? The initial metrics for this year included community-based variables, which dealt with positivity, total number of cases, and then our hospitalizations. Then in late October, we began incorporating school-based metrics and removed the hospitalization metric. Okay? Those school-based metrics are the ones you know now, positive cases of students and the number of students quarantined. So here is a blank slide of what the metrics look like. You guys are very familiar with that, with the, you know, two community metrics and two school-based metrics. And this just sort of summarizes it up. Our current metrics are two community and two school. So what the metric team had to consider was the addition of a fifth metric and review, we wanted to look at adding a fifth metric to balance things out. That would give you a majority of three and two presumably, and also to revisit the current metrics we had. Now, part of that conversation was, just how many metrics do you want? There's a point at which, if you have six or seven, eight, nine variables, I'm afraid that that doesn't have the kind of transparency or accessibility that the public needs. It becomes, I think, daunting to a certain degree. So we, the first thing we discussed was hospitalizations. Do we go back to the inclusion of hospitalizations? The group did not feel that that would be a good metric to include. There were a few reasons for that. One is, while it might be important, it might be seen as an important measure of community health, there are confounding variables as to who are in our hospitals, and that became a, I think that gets us bogged down. Moreover, it's one more community variable about a school-based decision, so the group did not find in favor of the hospitalization variable. The, we did discuss thoroughly the addition of staff quarantines as a fifth metric. We felt like this was an important metric for measuring the direct effect of COVID on school operations, on total school operations. And this board has talked several times, when I bring up students and when I overly emphasize students, sometimes you all remind me, you haven't mentioned up staff. And so the reality of it is, this is a metric that's directly tied to our staff, so we thought that would be a good item to include. At one point, the group discussed the inclusion of influenza-like illnesses, so that instead of just saying, are people out for COVID or COVID quarantines, should we look at all influenza-like illnesses? This way, we're capturing people who might have taken home tests, also people who might be COVID symptomatic but not show up as a confirmed positive. After a lot of discussion, the group felt like this, that would not be a good item to include. For one reason, it's, it would require even more labor, right? And I think we really want our staff, our principals, our teachers, to be able to focus on our students and not gathering one more point of data. So we felt like that would be, it would be best if we were able to use data that we already had. So some additional considerations were the use of student absences to replace quarantines as a metric. And there are a lot of variables that go into student absences, so I think that became somewhat confounding. We have a really good idea who our quarantines are. Our absences have come to us for many reasons, and there are some issues of equity that come into play. I'm just going to make one quick example. And this is painting with really broad brushstrokes, but for many families that are in high wealth situations, if a child misses a bus, perhaps there's a stay-at-home mom or dad who can bring a kid to school, right? For families that might be in a low wealth situation where perhaps both parents are working, there is nobody to bring the child to school, and so that school, that child ends up being absent. We wondered about, would we be recording as possible COVID variables, something that's not even connected to COVID? Okay? I hope that makes sense. And then, we also discussed something about adding a descriptive sentence to finding how COVID-positive cases are reported. So among our conversations, and you all heard from the Health Alliance earlier this month, where they talked about the fact that symptomatic students are required to stay home, and those symptomatic students don't show up on our dashboard as positive cases because they're not confirmed positives. So we, we thought that might be, there might be some value in adding some language on our site to say what a positive case was. Okay? So that's, that's where we were. The group discussed, okay, so another consideration was a process consideration. So there are certainly times where we're out of school for extended time periods. And I think you'll remember, this was an issue that Ms. Carpenter brought up at one time, which was to say that when we come back from something like Christmas break, right, when we come back right after New Year's, we don't have fresh data. We don't have, you know, contemporaneous data about quarantines and positives. And so what the group said was, if we don't have contemporaneous data within the last week or after a five-day planned absence or something of that nature, if you had two community variables, the two community variables were in the orange or red zone, we would recommend that we come back in masks for that time period until such time as you've had a week to get your own school data. Okay? The group discussed metrics three and four, which dealt with our quarantines and our positive cases in terms of the scale of those metrics. I think everybody thought having relevant school-based data was really important. So student absences, students, the number of students who are out due to being COVID-positive and due to being quarantined related to COVID, the inclusion of those made a lot of sense to us as a school system. The question was the scale. The scale did not seem to be realistic. And so that's what we revisited as a group. So what we used was local data from Cabarrus County Schools. And we made a new metric based on average numbers for the 21, 22 school year. So in other words, we're using our own local source data. Okay? What we determined was the average weekly numbers were, the number of student positives was about 164 cases per week. The number of quarantines is about 608 cases per week, and staff quarantines was 99 and a half cases per week. All right? So those were our averages. So the group, the work group, recommended rescaling the metrics around student positives and quarantines, not to a percentage but to a flat number, and then to add one metric for staff quarantines. And then, of course, returning from one week or more of no school, use community data, metrics one and two, until we have one week of data for students and staff. And if both, if both community variables were in the red or orange zone, mask would be required. If one or neither was in the red or orange zones, mask would be optional. So essentially, the, this is the current metric one more time, as you're used to seeing it with the four variables, with percentage bases for student positives and quarantines. Here are where we're at, we're looking at rescaling them. So item three, metric three, weekly number of CCS students who are COVID-confirmed positive cases. You'll see that the breakpoint is at 175, which is a little bit higher than the average number we have every week. Okay? It's a little bit higher. Metric number four, the breakpoint is 600, which you'll see is just a little bit lower than the number, average number of quarantines each week. And then, the breakpoint for staff quarantines is at 100, which is right on the average. Okay? So in other words, we took our data, we split it in half, and said, if you're above the average, you're in the yellow red zone; if you're below the average, I'm so sorry, folks, you're in the gold and red zone; and if you're below the average, you're in the yellow and green zone. So here is what that metric looks like, rescaled with five, with five, you know, data points. You'll see metrics one and two remain unchanged. You'll see metric three, the metric is the same, but it's been rescaled. Same for metric four, the metric is the same, it's been rescaled. And metric five is the inclusion of staff quarantines. I'm going to pause for a minute and let you guys look at that and soak it in for just a minute, if I can. It would be natural for you all to have the question of, so what would this have looked like throughout the year? So suppose we had five metrics throughout the year. So what I went back and did is I analyzed the data to the best of my ability from the start of the school year, and some of this is a little bit inferential, where I had to do some research and data points that the Health Alliance had for our community data because we weren't keeping track of all that back in August and September. But from what I can tell, it looked like we would have had an equal number of weeks where we're masked and unmasked. And it would have been the same amount of weeks that were masked and unmasked that the board had, it would just be in slightly different starting and ending times. Okay? So you'll notice that it would have said we would have gone mask optional sometime in mid-September. And then sometime around Thanksgiving, we would have gone to mask mandated, had we had five metrics that are scaled the way that these are. And again, these are the revised metrics. Now with our current data plugged in, you could see that four of the five metrics would be in the red zone, with one of them being that sort of gold-colored zone, and that being the number of quarantines. I'm going to pause for a minute before I get into anything about tests to stay to entertain questions. Actually, you know what? Ms. Grimsley, let me ask you what your preference is. Should I march through tests to stay? Would you like me to pause a moment?
I think just go ahead through. They know this enough to look through.
Okay, very well.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the tests-to-stay programs, I covered this last week with you all, remembering that there are, in fact, the most recent iteration of the toolkit, gives us two different options for tests-to-stay, one being the ABC Science Collaborative's tests-to-stay, which I think is the one that's most commonly called tests-to-stay. When I met with you all in November and asked to go into tests-to-stay, that's what I was requesting, right? Since then, there's been enough data for the folks who authored the toolkit to allow the second option for a toolkit version of the tests-to-stay program. And as we discussed, that's the version that we're in now. Some of the things we talked about was that the, in a mask-mandated environment, we do not need the approval of our local health department in order to be in the tests-to-stay, the toolkit's version of the tests-to-stay program. So that's the one that we've been in currently. Also, there is no option for a test-to-stay in the, with the toolkit if we go mask optional. Let me pause for a second on that. I'm not, the reason I want to, I'm saying that to you all is I want you to have the information. I want to make sure that you all have the information. I would feel derelict if I left that out, because I think it's really important for you guys to be aware of that. Okay? The folks at, the folks at Duke, you guys know this, they're geniuses. They're like the smartest people you could spend some time on the phone with or on a webinar with. They're just quite brilliant. At any rate, they've organized the content in a way that I found really easy to follow. I've highlighted in green what the Strong Schools Toolkit says about their tests-to-stay program and how it's different than the Duke program. So you can see that, that in the, in the tests-to-stay with the toolkit version, there are two strongly recommended tests as opposed to two or three required tests. In all circumstances, students must remain asymptomatic, and, let's see, and you can also see that anyone is eligible to remain in school to stay, except for household contacts and positive people. This is, this, I'm so sorry, this, this slide is out of place. It's supposed to be up towards the beginning, and I'm so sorry, it's just been misplaced. All right. So I'm here to answer whatever questions you all have.
Thank you, Mr. Basileis, and I will start with Ms. Adcock.
Okay, great. Thank you. I know I'd asked some questions prior to the meeting, so thank you guys for answering Can you go back to the slide that shows the numbers that you guys have come up with?
Is this the one you're speaking of?
Yes. So when you chose the numbers for the weekly students that are positive, was that around the time when we were in low infection? So when I see 86 as a number, and then I think about the number of students with confirmed positive cases out of 34,000 kids, that's .002% of the student population, which is really low.
Yes. Right. So there's a few things. If I can start by saying, the yellow and the green zone, right, the yellow and the green zone are both mask optional. So the breakpoint there is 175. You need 175-plus cases to be in a, for one variable to be in a mask-mandated situation. And again, I know that's, your point about percentages, 175, I think calculates to around 2%, right? Just over 2% of the student body. The calculation was done from the first week of school through, not the current week, but the week before this, the week that the task force met. So it was, it was a composite of the entire school year, of the 19 weeks of data that we had. So yes, low numbers were included, high numbers were included, all numbers were included. Does that make sense?
It does. It just, to me, it doesn't make any sense for us to, if we have numbers, we've got to have a percentage of our total student population. And that's really, really low. I mean, are we ever even going to hit that, again, being in this situation that we're in now? I mean, we have to think about things differently because COVID has changed, and how are we going to manage, you know, our students and how we go forward with this? So I'm just saying, I think those numbers are not realistic. The other question I do have is, how many days are the stats for that you had previously? Because we're out of school, snow days, and then a holiday, so how many days total was that, those numbers for?
I'm sorry, I may pull these numbers up. This is what you're speaking of, correct?
Yes.
All right. So the quarantine number will always reflect the last, the total number of students who are out as close contacts and positive students on the last day of school for that week. So there should be some continuity in that, in the quarantine number. So just as a point of reference, if you look at the November 22nd number, you'll see that seemingly out of nowhere, the number dips of our positives, but the quarantines remain basically the same. So the quarantine, so the quarantine number is fairly static. The positives reflect the cumulative total of positive, of positive cases identified that week. So we had one day of in-person learning last week, so that quarantine number only reflects students that were out as positives and close contacts on that day. And so while we're still gathering information about positive students, you would expect that you're probably not gathering it at quite the same rate that you would if you were in school all week. So with just the one, I would say it's, it's for the entire week, but it was only one day of in-person learning.
And then, do you know the number of students that we've had in tests-to-stay over the last two weeks?
I don't. I don't know the number of students that have, that have tested in tests-to-stay. I can tell you, when we first came back, there were a lot of testing challenges because of the number of tests that we had, but since then, I understand we have the antigen tests, we have the PCR tests, and we're in a, we're in the position we would like to be in.
So previous to the break, I believe we were at around 329 students, and if we took that and correlated that to our quarantines, it was about 30% of our kids, would be about the amount. So in that, in that original tests-to-stay program, we were in the Duke-ABC Collaborative tests-to-stay program. When the numbers increased and the positivity rate went up, we were no longer in that program because one of the qualifiers for being in that program was that you had to have the support of your public health director in Cabarrus County. Our public health director did not support that tests-to-stay program, which was the ABC Collaborative program, in a non-masked environment because the positivity rate had gone so high. To come back into that program, the recommendation from the public health director has said that they want us to be at least 15% positivity rate or lower, and 1,000 cases over a two-week period or lower. And that if we got to that 15% positivity rate or lower in 1,000 cases over two weeks, that she would engage in a discussion with us. She supports the tests-to-stay program, but not at the high levels that it's at right now. So previous to the break, we were in that program. The rates went high, we stopped being in that program. When we came back on January 10th, the North Carolina Toolkit program came out. At that point, we were masked, so everybody technically is in a tests-to-stay program right now because we're, under the North Carolina Toolkit, we're in a masked environment, so all of our kids can participate in that. But you also now have to consider the five-day quarantine, too. So, and John can go into different, different avenues of that. So there's two different tests-to-stay programs. I want to be very clear that we understand that. The previous one was the Duke-ABC Collaborative that had the requirements in that, and then when our health director said, hey, your positivity rates are too high, I can't support that, that stopped. When we came back in January, what I just said to you was what the parameters are, that the health director would accept us going back into that program, the Duke Collaborative, and we're not there yet. And that would be in a mask optional environment. If you go mask optional, you're no longer in the toolkit tests-to-stay program because the requirement for that one is to be masked. Okay? Did I say that clear, John?
I see.
Okay. So I just want to be clear on that, that we kind of understand that the, that some of the variations and some of the requirements of those programs. Thank you, John.
I have one quick to mention. John, will you key it, please?
I'll figure it out eventually. I do enough of these, I'll figure it out. So the number of school-based exclusions as, for close contacts, in the week of January 10th through 14th was 623 students. The first week back, it was 256 students. This week, it was 27, right? And so that's mainly because, so it's a, it makes a difference in, you know, I guess you, that averages out to probably about 300 or so students who aren't quarantined. I know that's been a big issue for this board of, you guys have described students who are not unnecessarily quarantined, who never become positive or something of that nature. So I think that's, that may bump into some of what you're asking, Ms. Adcock. I hope that dovetails into that.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate your help and for all that you've done with this. Appreciate the data.
Thank you.
Ms. Carpenter?
Thank you. And again, thank you for all your work, and I want to thank the task force. I've just been able to get on the task force, and I was very impressed with all the members of it and the work that they put into this, and I do appreciate that so much. My question is kind of an odd one, and I don't know if you can answer it, but we got many emails this week, and one of the, one of, or a couple of them I've received, I hope you can answer it, and I don't know if you can, but one of the questions that I got was, people say, you know, these masks aren't working. The numbers have gone up. Now, my response or what I thought, well, gee, you know, we knew they would, they probably would have gone up even more if people weren't wearing masks, but I wanted to get your feedback on this. Now, that was my response. You know, people hadn't been wearing them, they may have gone up even more, but I want to get your input. I want the view- I want the viewing audience to hear what your response would be on this, I mean.
Sure. Okay, so when I hear the folks in the Health Department talk about the value of masks, I believe them. I assume they're talking from their knowledge, you know, based on public health. So I have to assume that they're, what they're saying is right. I think about, as these numbers go up, I hope you guys will indulge a really quick metaphor. When it's very hot out, the number of drownings increase. When it's very hot out, the number of, the amount of ice cream sold also increases, right? It would be erroneous to include that somehow ice cream was involved in people, you know, drowning or needing to be rescued from drowning. But you might make a mistake of causation where there's correlation. Does that make sense? So right now, I think we're just going through such a tremendous surge in the number of cases that I don't think that you can, I don't think that you can attribute the causation to the masks. Does that make sense to you?
Yeah, well, I mean, I see that because I've been watching trends because the things, it'll reach a peak, and then it will start, it will start decreasing because I've watched this across the nation, you know, and it reaches its final peak, then it starts decreasing.
Right.
And you've got to look at the whole picture. But again, I had received those questions, and again, I tried to get answers when people do ask those questions, and that's why I wanted to ask that.
Right.
Because I've read, you know, about anything I can read on the subject, and I did want to ask that question.
Yeah, I think it's one of those situations where we see, sometimes people see correlation and mistake it for causation. So I think that's perhaps the most reductive way to say it.
But that was it. And two, the numbers that we see, I know that the task force did take the average on that, and you, can you bring up the chart that, you did do the chart that we see, the current chart?
Oh, sure.
With the new chart that you showed.
Yes, ma'am. This is the revised, is this what you're looking at?
And then the one with the numbers plugged in now.
Sure thing.
So this is the way it stands right now. So it's all in orange and red with the current numbers as they are now, correct? So we've got one in orange and four in red, correct?
Well, so I need to qualify that. If this board voted to adopt this metric, that would be true. Right now, this is just what it would look like if the board, those numbers are factual, those are the actual numbers. But I can't say that it's a, the current metric until the board votes to say it's the metric.
Okay, but that's with this new, the new metric?
That's right.
That we, we, with this one here, okay? That's the only que, and then, if we didn't adopt this one, and they, we would not have the test and stay, correct?
Well, so the test to stay is completely contingent on whether or not we're masked or not.
Okay.
So I think if we strictly adhere to what the metrics were, and they were a two-to-two split, and we stayed in a, if we were in a state of being mask optional, we would not have the test to stay option.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
May I say one thing, since you brought up the task force? And I, and I promise I'll be brief. That group of people in the task force is, they're high caliber people from multiple professions, it's multiple, multidisciplinary, lots of different ways of thinking, approaching life, just a lot of very strong, capable people with really strong personalities. I do want to credit Sue Burns, who leads the Metrics Task Force. Sue did a great job of eliciting feedback from everybody that was in that group. I think we heard the voices of everybody that was in that group, and that's not an easy thing to do. So I just want to make sure that we, that you all recognize what a skilled facilitator you have in this process and her. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. Thanks for the minute to do that.
Ms. Blackwell.
So, John, I'm glad you said that because I definitely wanted to tell Sue how much I appreciated all of the work that she did on the Metrics Committee on the Task Force. This is my first time on the Task Force as well with Carolyn, and so we have met twice, and I know that the Metrics Committee has already met to come up with this. And I was really impressed with just everything that they had done and come up with and kind of collaborated together, so I really appreciate that. I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
One of my questions, if you'll go back to the slide with all of the numbers on it with the quarantine percentage and?
Okay.
Yep. Or was that it? Nope, keep going.
Okay.
No, that's not it.
That's right?
Yep, that's the one. So I was noticing at the bottom, kind of, you know, the week of January 17th through the 23rd. So according to this, it looks like the quarantine becomes positive at 4%, which looks like it's a higher rate of positives when masks were mandated. Am I reading that correctly?
So certainly there, certainly you do see an increase because you have 33, just like the previous week, you have 33 cases. But what you have there is you have, you've had such a reduced number of quarantines, so your quarantines have dropped by, you know, about 800 cases. So I, so you're right, proportionally, it would seem to be more proportionally, but there's, there is not an increase in terms of the total number.
Okay, and then I also, to Ms. Denise's point about the realistic piece of these numbers, our data is so high right now because of the transmissibility of something like the Omicron variant, that, you know, I question, I'll tell you one thing that makes me really nervous, and this was at the task force meeting on Friday, was this discussion about how we should be, after extended holidays and things like that, automatically or whatever, based on community spread going into masks mandated until we can get a week's worth of data. This makes me think that we're going to be dragging this thing out for months and years to come. And that is what really concerns me regarding this, because I think at some point, we're going to have to say, COVID is here to stay, we have people that do very well with it, and then, you know, others that don't, which I completely understand that, but at some point, something's got to give where we say, this is going to be what it be, and we need to move past this and start focusing on the loss of learning and the mental, you know, things and all of that. So those are just my thoughts on it, but.
Yeah, I appreciate that. So I think the intention for this group was to give you guys the best information they could and be as deliberate and planful as possible, so we weren't dealing with each and every situation like it was a novel, unanticipated event. I'm with you, Laura, I would love nothing more than there to be, COVID to be something that we don't have to wrestle with in schools every day, and we don't have to sort of figure out how to keep everybody safe.
Well, I guess my question, when do we end that? When do we stop it and just say, no more? We're not doing this anymore?
Yeah, I sincerely don't have the answer to that question, I really don't.
Okay, that's good.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mr. Farr.
Just thanks for your work, and you guys know where I stand, so there's no need to waste your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farr.
Mr. Walter.
Short and to the point. How many people are on this task force, again?
I want to say it's, I want to say it's 39 or 40.
So a group of 40 people spent, how long did you spend on this stuff?
So, let's see, I think on, I think the entire group of 40 met on two separate afternoons, I think for 60 to 90 minutes. And then the Metrics Group met independently, I believe, for 16 minutes. That's a group of, a subgroup of about 10.
Okay, so 10 people on the Metrics Committee, is that a subcommittee or? I don't know, I think it's important that we have, it's clear and understanding, and anyone who sees it can kind of come up with where we're at, and I think five metrics is better than four. I'm still trying to look at it, you know, are these the best metrics to use?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't really know one way or the other. What's concerning though is if you go back to the number, I don't know where your chart that's actually got the numbers on the proposal, on the proposal.
Sure, absolutely, I go to the end.
Keep going, I guess.
I'm so sorry.
You just flattered me.
You'd think I'm doing this on purpose, but this is the one.
Yeah, that's the one.
Yeah.
208 teachers that are unquarantined, and two weeks ago, we were all up in arms about how difficult it was when you have 125. That's a massive issue, I think.
May I qualify that number, Ms.?
Yes, please do.
So it's 208 staff members, so a large proportion of them will be teachers, but there's also other staff members as well. So I just want to be clear about, because I think you said.
And I do appreciate you clarifying that, so that is important.
Yeah.
Do we need a metric that says something about the teachers in the classroom, or we, okay with just staff members?
Yeah, I think that's a really good, good point. Like, what I'm presenting to you tonight is what the task force is recommending that you all consider, or inviting you all to consider. At the end of the day, you all as the elected board are the ones who will make a determination as to what you'll support and not support. I certainly would imagine it's in your purview to amend, amend something as needed. If you were to say, like, well, you know, it needs to say teachers instead of staff, I would think that would be within your purview to do.
Maybe, but it's not within my expertise, so I couldn't come up with my, make a recommendation on what that would be, so.
Yeah, I understand.
Mr. Rafter, let me step in just for a second, you just hold that thought. So if we were to ask that, because we did have that discussion, are you able to, with these numbers, determine what those numbers are that are just teachers alone, or staff needing a substitute versus staff that are not teachers or needing a substitute?
So I'm going to give you a qualified yes. I'd have to work with our Human Resources Department. I believe the answer to that is yes, I just can't say with 100% confidence having not asked.
So I can, the answer is yes, and HR does have that information, so we could get that for you.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Walter, continue.
That is a top concern on, do we have enough teachers in our classrooms, or subs? And my big concern, again, and it has been for months and weeks here, is that we're sending kids home, not taking, not letting them come to school when they're not sick, and they never come up with COVID, and according to your number of chart there, it's like 90% or more. That's unacceptable. I mean, granted, I see the numbers have dropped by half, so what is the reason for that? Is that the masking, or is that because we didn't have school days to really measure? Why are the quarantines down so much?
Well, so there's a few things. The first thing is, that I want to say is that of those quarantines, there are only 27 that were school-based exposures. So the only people that were home are the, are people who are sick, symptomatic, or live with somebody who's sick or symptomatic, other than the 27 students that I just mentioned a moment ago. So in fact, while it says only 4% have turned positive, it would be, it would be false to conclude that, that means that 96% are not positive, right?
Kind of, but yeah.
Okay, so again, for this, so for this week, only, of our quarantines, there are only 27 that are school-based exposures. So under the new rules with the Toolkit, with the revisions of the Toolkit, what ends up happening is you see a lot less exclusions due to being close contacts. Those kids are allowed to stay in school due to the Toolkit version of the Test to Stay Program, so we're not sending kids home to the, to nearly the tune that we were in the past.
And this week, because of the masking is what you're saying now?
I'm saying that's because, well, we can only, it's two things, the revisions to the Toolkit, which are based on the fact that we're in a universal masking situation.
Okay. That's all I got for the moment.
Okay, all right, thanks, Rob.
Ms. Sandich.
So I just want to echo what everyone has said to the task force participants. I want to just say I appreciate your time, and thank you for making this as probably clear as it's been throughout this entire time. This metrics allows for decision-making, in my opinion, so again, just kudos to the task force. So I've got a few questions that I had last week that I thought would be answered today, but they weren't. So are we in a, I guess, a crisis in rapid tests? Do we have enough? Do I hear that?
So based on my conversation with the health lines this afternoon, we have enough rapid tests.
Okay. Okay, and then just in your opinion, or based on facts, if you have them, how helpful is the test to stay program at reducing quarantines? I really want to understand, does this hurt or help us in any way?
So, and it's my opinion that the test to stay program in either iteration helps significantly. So when you heard Dr. Kapicki say that there were around 300 students just before the winter break, just before Christmas, that were able to stay in school and not be quarantined, I mean, that's a huge number. I understand that we have a lot more students than that that were quarantined, but for those 300 or so kids, that made a huge difference. When I, when I look at the data that tells me that 27 kids were sent home this week as, as school-based exposures, but the week before was 623, that, I mean, what's in the driver's seat right there is us being able to use the test to stay program, even the revised Toolkit version of the test to stay program. It's my opinion that that's a significant, I think the word Dr. Kapicki used was weapon. I think it's a great resource in helping kids stay in school.
And then I just wanted to add to Rob's point about understanding the amount of teachers that are out. I do think we need to know staff as a whole, but I do think maybe there should be a line under there that says teachers specifically, because that does limit us in quite a bit outside of just not having staff. Then I guess maybe this next question, and my last question, maybe for Jay or Jonathan. So let's just say we accept this, this metrics. Going forward, will we just have to discuss the metric and see where it's at, at that point, and not have to, I want to make this make sense. So what I'm trying to understand is if we approve this metrics, this tells us what we can do based on where we're at on the metrics, right? That's what I'm thinking. But we still have to meet every month. So in that meeting, could it just be, hey, we're at the metrics on green, so that's our decision? Could it be that simple? I hope that made sense.
I'll try and make, it does make sense. What happens is by law, this board needs to meet every month and make a decision about whether you're going to, what you're going to do about masking. And to me, it's a two-pronged, either mask, either it's mask mandatory, or it's mask optional, okay? Or you can say no mask whatsoever. But, so when this board makes that decision, this board can use the guidelines, okay? Still have input, but use the guidelines as a guide as to what you're going to, how you're going to make up your decision, whether, Mrs. Sandich, you're going to make up your decision solely based on this or other information, but yes, you should state what your position is. But this would be a guide, and are you going to, you can solely rely on this, or you can use this as a guide to what you believe is in the best interest and what your decision is based on where the community stands. So this is a good guide, this could be a standing principle. This board can say, we will follow this metric guide, based guidelines, no matter what, that's a, that's a decision that the seven make. So it, it all depends on what the board wants to do, and then what each individual wants to do at each month.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
Okay, John, I have a couple of questions. So in that new metric, when we talked about it, I'm going to just really kind of expand what Rob and Keisha talked about. The number of staff quarantined, so I really do think it's important to identify our staff that needs a substitute versus not. We always will deal with, you know, staff that's out, and that was one of my other questions, is the quarantines for absences due to, other than COVID. I saw the slide where it said flu-like symptoms, so that, how are we going to separate that? That is going to be very tough, that's always, and going into flu season, there's no way that that number's not going to go up, and I'm really curious to why, if the numbers are going up, that's probably explaining that piece of it right there, some of it at least. And where does it, where does it figure back in about staff being vaccinated?
So vaccinated staff who are exposed as, you know, close contacts would not need to, they would not need to go home, right? Unless they were symptomatic or if they were positive. So vaccinated people who are positive or symptomatic. were positive. So vaccinated people who are positive or symptomatic do have to go home, they do have to quarantine, just like everybody else.
So that would include flu-like symptoms or cold-like symptoms, and then they get a test? I mean, how do we identify which is which? Because we are getting ready to go into that season, which is really going to escalate those numbers just by default.
So, I think what you're saying is if somebody has a symptom that looks like COVID or potentially something else, and we don't know what it is, if they're quarantined, is it possible they'll be quarantined as a COVID quarantine? I don't know exactly how that process works for HR. I'd have to do a little bit more inquiry to figure that out, to see if they're able to, you know, untangle that or not. But I would say, anybody who's symptomatic, you know, I'm not sure if they show up as a confirmed quarantine or not. I'd have to examine that a little bit more.
I think we need a little bit more information about that particular one. That's very global. And of course, I was part of the conversation, and was listening to a lot of conversation back and forth. And, you know, I will also say, the task force did just a super job. Those are, they really are a great group of people. They consider a lot of the different criteria that we have to take into consideration with this. They do a super job. But I really do think that we need to look at, when we say weekly number of staff quarantined, if your first slide said, and that might not have been quite identified during the task force work, what are they quarantined for? You know, if it's just flu-like symptoms, that's going to be a problem, or a potential problem, I should say, moving forward, just to make that an identifier by itself. That's a very global statement. And I know we had some conversation, but the task force might need to, either the board's going to decide, or the task force might have to revisit that to say that needs to be drilled down just a little bit better, maybe. I didn't think about that day that we were having that discussion. It made sense about staff in quarantine, but now when I see what y'all came back with, as far as quarantine can consider, flu-like symptoms, cold-like symptoms, you know, that's more global than I think everybody thought.
So I need to confirm that. So I don't know that to be a fact. I initially was operating under the assumption, the unchecked assumption, that if you were quarantined, that it worked a lot the same way it does for students, where there was a positive person that you were either a close contact to, or you're symptomatic because of.
Of COVID itself.
I didn't think that it operated on just symptomatic people. And again, that's an unchecked assumption. I hadn't considered the question until you just mentioned it.
I think we really need a confirmed answer to that one, for sure.
I will check with our.
Before we entertain adopting an additional metric. And then I want to know, the breakdown from elementary, middle school, and high school on quarantines, do we still have that? We were keeping that at one time. And the reason I think that's an important piece of information is because now students at the middle school and high school level have had an opportunity to be vaccinated as well. And I think that number would be real important to see. Are quarantines mainly on the elementary school level, or are they at the middle school and high school where, you know, they really have had an opportunity to be vaccinated?
I certainly can get you that data if you're looking for it. If what you're looking for is the number of quarantines at each level, I can certainly get you that, if you'd like. Well, so, I don't believe that the total, I think that we give you a quarantine total. I don't think we give you a quarantine breakdown by level, by school level.
Yeah, it used to be, but for some reason, we got away with, as things change, I think it's kind of, it went to another group total or something. I can't remember exactly what I saw, but if you could just get that for us, that would be great.
Sure. Moving forward for?
Yes, moving forward, thank you. I was going to say, I wish we'd kept the kids home for Christmas, or in school for Christmas break, instead of sending them home. It seems like the getting out in the community was the problem, going to increase our numbers with them not being in school. But, moving forward, board, what is the pleasure?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So since the real hang-up, from what I hear, is on number five, is there any way to get the exact number tonight, during this discussion? Dr. Kupicki?
Well, I think in fairness, it'd be better if we, you know, took the time, wrote that number up, instead of rushing to get it. I don't want to guess at it. We don't have it here in front of us, so I don't want to misinform the board. I'd rather take the time, which would be by tomorrow morning, we could have that number. I do know that, I know the total number of staff that are out this week, and the total number of quarantined that are out this week, but I'd have to break it down to split off, like, who the teachers were. For example, I know a week ago, we had 400 staff members out, we had 116 positive cases. Excuse me, we had 400 staff members quarantined, and we had 116 positive cases. This week, we had 208 quarantines and 90 positive cases, but that's all employed adults, so I'd have to take some time to break that down for you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, board members. Any more discussion, comments? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
I would like to put a motion on the floor. Like to make a motion that we make masks optional, starting today, tomorrow.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for masks to be moved to mask optional, beginning tomorrow. Dr. Kupicki, is that a good date? I know we talked about that last time.
I think any motion that you approve this evening, we should have a 24-hour wait period. So if today is Monday, we'd implement it Wednesday to make sure we communicate that out to all of our community.
But if we don't do anything?
That's if you change. If you changed to, if you changed from masking to mask optional, I would ask you to give us a date to communicate that out to our public.
But if we don't do, if we don't do anything, it automatically drops tonight, in a couple hours. I mean, that's what's on our website, that's everywhere, that this mask mandate was through today.
Right, and I think if you stay, and if you vote to stay masked, that's not going to be hard communication.
Mr. Walter, do you understand that piece of it?
My understanding is that the motion that we had last time expired today. So unless we did something, it was going to drop. The mandate would drop.
So I have a motion on the floor by Ms. Blackwell. Are you okay with that starting date of Wednesday, January the 26th?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And seconded by Mr. Farr, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, motion fails, four to three. So that means we will remain mask mandate, and it will continue.
Well, it won't unless we vote for it, right?
The motion to make us mask optional just failed.
Correct, but the motion.
What other option is there?
She'd have to put something on the table, otherwise it expires at the end of the day. We don't have a motion that says it's going to continue.
Jay, do I need a motion to, I'm thinking if mask optional, we don't have another option, but if I need a technical motion, I will?
I'd like to look at the motion that was made two weeks ago by Mrs. Carpenter.
I have it, let me just read it.
Yeah, that would be the best thing.
Move to make mask mandatory, beginning 1/12/2022 until 1/24/2022, excluding athletic events, extracurricular activities, arts performances, and EC self-contained rooms, with test to stay being reinstated.
So that would mean it would be mask mandatory through today, at midnight tonight. If the board does not make any decision, makes no decision, if they leave it right now, it would be mask optional tomorrow.
But my mask optional motion just failed.
No, no, that was, that would have been the vote, but the motion that was made says it has an end date of 1/24.
Oh, sure, that's why we have to vote again.
So at midnight tonight, it then goes back, reverts back to it, because the motion has a deadline, had a timeline, so you revert back to what you had before, which would be mask optional.
Right.
Does that make sense?
But my mask optional vote just failed.
Correct.
So do we need a, do you mean just have someone to make a motion for the mask mandate?
To be clear.
To be clear, okay.
To be clear, I think this board needs to make a, what are we going to do, what are you going to do, from January the 24th, or January the 25th, actually, until the next time this is brought up before the board?
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we stay mask mandate for the next two weeks.
You want to give a date of our work session, February the 7th?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want the work session, or the business session, where you typically?
The work session is the first one.
Okay.
The work session.
Okay, all right.
I second that.
So I have a motion on the floor by Ms. Adcock, to remain in mask mandatory, to continue through our works, or until our work session of February the 7th. Seconded by Ms. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? So that motion fails.
Okay, I guess I get to attempt the motion, because I think the Health Department ask was, was to the end of the month. And what is their recommendation of the superintendent?
Well, I think I would go with the recommendation for two weeks, to go two weeks more to, I believe it was Mrs. Adcock that made the recommendation, to go two weeks more to February 7th. It'll give us two more weeks of data. I know the Health Department asks to the end of the month, but I think that, I don't think it'd be productive to bring us back in a week. I only have one week's worth of data to share with you. So if you give us two weeks to, I believe it's February 7th, they'll be able to give us, provide you with two weeks of data, and give you some better information to the board. So I would recommend that we stay masked for two more weeks.
Mr. Walter, you just voted against that, right?
That's correct, because it wasn't what the Health Department stated in their presentation last month. Her presentation, once she stated, was if you cannot remain six feet, you should be masked. And I'm okay with that being a recommendation. If you cannot maintain, it's optional unless you cannot maintain six feet.
So that motion just failed, four to three. So we will be returning to?
That is the, I'm asking, or presenting a motion that we mask be optional, except in the cases where we cannot, it's mandatory, such as the bus, or if you cannot maintain six feet social distance. So in certain classes, if they only have a couple of kids in the classroom, it's optional. If you have a full loaded class, kids in a classroom, it's mandatory.
I think we need to be clear cut here. Either we're masked optional or masked. I think we pick one or the other. It's very difficult, if you put a lot of stipulations on it, to, we'll be masked if this, we'll be masked optional if that. I would strongly recommend, if you're going to pick one, that, you know, just stick to it. Either we're masked optional, or we're masked. I would recommend that we go masked for two more weeks. I understand what the Health Department recommended, but we didn't go that route, and then we came back again, and the board extended us out two weeks. So, to me, that's a non-issue. But I just don't think we can keep splitting hairs here. I think we just pick one and stick with it for two weeks, and go that direction.
Again, the ask was to mask optional, or mask mandated, if you could not maintain six feet, and to get us through to the end of the month. I mean, that's what they asked for. So why would we do anything more than that?
Again, I think we're splitting hairs. I think we continue to have a conversation that we just have to pick one or the other, and just go with it. And we come back in two weeks, we give you data, we say, here's what's working, here's what's not, just as we've been doing for the last five and a half months, and go from there. The more wordy you make the mandate, the more difficult it is to carry it out, the harder it becomes to communicate it out. If we just say we're masked, everyone knows what that is. If we say we're masked optional, we know what that is too. Like, just think, again, I think we're, I think we're wordsmithing it too much, and having too much conversation, and I would just pick one, or pick the other, and go there.
Ms. Carpenter?
Madam Chair, and one thing to keep in mind, and you seem to, everybody seems to be putting that off the side, this, we're going to lose test and stay if we do not have the mask. And I really worry about that, because Mr. Basile had told us that this seems to be working. And our whole, everybody that's sitting along this podium have said they want to keep these kids in school. And they, and it has been said, at least 300 to 600 students have been able to stay in school because we've had this. And if we go masked optional, we're not going to have these kids in school. So I really want to keep this test and stay in place. And so if we can do it for at least two, you know, another two weeks, hopefully these numbers are going to go down. You know, it has started going down up north, and hopefully, keep our fingers crossed, we're going to see these totals go down. We hope. So another two weeks, you know, let's, let's hope and pray that that's going to happen. So I would like, I'm going to try it again. Let's, I'm going to put a motion on the table again, to, for the next, I'm trying it again, okay?
If you have the floor.
I'm going to put a motion on the table again, to put us to do mask mandate for another two weeks, to make it in the, I'll put it out there again, for, to the, to the work session, to go for another two weeks mandated, mask mandated, until our work, our work session.
Does that include the current exceptions that are in place?
Do what?
Does that include the current exceptions that are in place, or not?
Just like the, our superintendent said, we don't, they just make it mandated for two weeks.
Rob, I think all the current, excuse me, Mrs. Carpenter, I apologize, I didn't interrupt you. Rob, to answer that question, I think we keep the mandate in place as it is right now. That would include all the exceptions that are currently in place, yes. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
With an expiration date of two weeks.
In two weeks.
The expiration date would be February 7th, correct. Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter.
Okay, so restate your motion. I will restate your motion. The motion is on the floor, that we will remain mask mandate until our work session Monday, February the 7th.
Just like we have it right now.
Just like you had it before, okay. You have a motion on the floor. Does Ms. Carpenter have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mrs. Sandage. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now that motion passes, four to three. Okay. We will remain mask mandate, effective this day, January the 24th, 2022. And with that, I would ask for a motion at the board convening.
I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Can we please clarify this task force recommendation? I don't want their time to be in vain. Just want to make that.
I'm going to put that on the work session for the discussion. I've said, the fifth metric seems to have some work that needs to be done with some clarification. And they knew that. They knew that we would discuss it tonight. So we'll put it on the work session for the February meeting.
So are we asking for them to do, modify the fifth metric?
Let's discuss that at the work session. They don't reconvene, or we can decide if they need to go back to the drawing board. But Mr. Basilese and Ms. Burns will have to figure out that information that we've all asked for. We've been kind of gathering it tonight to address that fifth metric, and we'll do just that, and discuss it with the task force, and then bring it back to the February meeting. Are you good with that?
I am. I just didn't want their work to be in vain.
No, that's okay. They understood that it would come before the board, and we would discuss it. Okay, with that, may I have a motion at the board convening closed session, to consult with an attorney and preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A3, and to consider confidential personnel matters pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A6?
I'm moved.
I have a motion by Ms. Sandage, a second by Ms. Blackwell. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. And with that, we will move into closed session, and we will say thank you to our viewing audience, and we will see you Monday, February the 7th, at our work session. Thank you, and good night.